Chair Ponce, we are ready to begin the meeting when you want.
I will as soon as Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Rothfeld come on. Good evening. Good evening. Welcome. Thank you for attending the Tuesday, November 30th, 2021 Special Meeting and Planning Commission. There's a little bit of paperwork we need to do first, and I'll start by reading this. This meeting will be conducted pursuant to provisions of Government Code, Section 54953, as amended by AB 361, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The Governor of California proclaimed a state of emergency related to COVID-19 on March 4th, 2020. A teleconference meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct essential business and is permitted under Government Code 54953 in order to protect the public health and safety of attendees. Consistent with Government Code, Section 54953, this Planning Commission meeting will be held via teleconference only and will not be physically open to the public. Commission members and staff will be teleconference into the meeting by audio and/or video. This meeting will be connected via Zoom webinar. Ms. Camaro, you have some additional information for it all?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Chair Ponce. I will share my screen momentarily. Members of the public who wish to participate in public comment by phone can do so by dialing 669-900-6833. At the prompt, you will enter the meeting ID 848-0893-5175. You will then press pound, and during public comments, you will press star nine to speak. Additionally, tonight's meeting will have live Spanish interpretation. To access the interpretation, you will need to use the Zoom application from either your cellphone, tablet, or computer. Instructions on how to use the Zoom app are listed in English and Spanish on the agenda posted on the city's website. Once you join the meeting from the Zoom application, you will see a small globe at the bottom or top of the screen. You will click on the globe, and you'll be able to access the live interpretation. We have Marcy and Claudia, who are our interpreters this evening. And that concludes my presentation, Chair.
Thank you. That takes us to the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Rothfeld, will you lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Ms. Camaro, will you take the role, please?
Thank you, Chair Ponce.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Commissioner Rothfeld?
Here.
Commissioner Segura is absent this evening. And Vice Chair Hale?
Here.
Thank you very much. That takes us to public forum. Under California law, public comments at special meetings are limited to subject on the agenda only. Therefore, public comment will take place during consideration of the item. Each person's comment shall be limited to four minutes. Consent items, we have none tonight. So that takes us to the public hearing for this evening, 5.1, continuing to receive comments on the draft environmental impact report for the Hunter subdivision project. I will open the public hearing, and at this time, I will ask if any commissioner has any ex parte communications they wish to bring to our attention. Seeing none. Director De Rosa, staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Ponce. Good evening, Planning Commission. It's our pleasure to host this special meeting, our second meeting, to talk about the Hunter EIR and receive public comments. The public comment period does end today, and we have posted all those comments on the agenda page. As we did on the November 2nd meeting, I'm going to have the project manager, Eric Norris, provide a brief PowerPoint presentation to familiarize the public with what the project proposal is, and then we can proceed with the rest of the meeting. And so I'll hand it over to Mr. Norris. Thank you.
Thank you, Maya. Get our slideshow going here. So yeah, I'll keep this brief, but just for those who weren't here at the first comment meeting. First of all, welcome to the second public comment meeting on the Environmental Impact Report. I'll give just a brief overview of the project, so we all have a clear under, at least a common understanding of what the project is. This is the location. It's at the end of Adams and Star, Adams Street and Star Avenue. It's highlighted there in a tan color. This is the application, which we're all looking at currently. This is the only active application on the project site. There are others that will follow on. I'll talk about those in a minute. But at the moment, what the applicant is proposing is to create this subdivision. What this does is it creates lots on which single-family homes can get built, and then one additional lot on which multifamily housing would be built. But this is the only application currently being processed. Now, the Environmental Impact Report looks at the effects of both this subdivision and the subsequent applications that would be needed in order to construct homes on the site. Real briefly, we're looking at a site that's just a little under 17 acres, 16.9 acres. There are a total of 87 proposed housing units. That breaks down into 51 single-family homes, 25 multifamily homes, and then 11 accessory dwelling units that would be built with the single-family homes. So of the 51 single-family homes, 11 of them would have an accessory dwelling unit built with them from day one. The general plan designation is medium-density residential. It has been that way since at least the 90s, and we believe probably back into the 1970s. So they're not requesting a change in either the general plan or the zoning. The zoning is also MDR, which matches that general plan designation. Now, the general plan requires that you build at a dense, at a number of units, which falls between the two density numbers, 5.1 per acre and 16. For this site, that gets down to 87 to 270 dwelling units. They are coming in, therefore, at the very bottom end of the range. The general plan would allow them to build more units than they're proposing to build. This is the current zoning on the site, so it is designated MDR, as I mentioned before. Variety of other kinds of zones around it, open space, agriculture, high-density residential, and then getting further down as we go sort of to the bottom of the picture, we're starting to get more into the commercial area over near Main Street. So currently, what the Planning Commission will be looking at when this goes into a public hearing mode early next year are two things. One of those is the draft environmental impact report. We've shown it as EIR here on the slide. The other is the tentative subdivision map. Now, in the future, as I mentioned, there are other things that need to get approved. The tentative subdivision map does not give them the ability to build any homes. It simply creates lots. They will need an affordable housing agreement, which is something that's approved by the city council. They will need to have the design of the proposed homes reviewed by the planning commission. And for the multifamily housing, that requires a conditional use permit, which is also reviewed and approved by the planning commission. So those are all future actions, which are not part of their current application package, but they will have to, assuming that they get through the first hurdle of getting the subdivision map approved, they'll have to come back with additional applications. The draft EIR looks at a variety of topics, and I'm sure anyone who's looked online and opened up the document knows that it's very long and very, very comprehensive. I'm not going to go into all the topics here, but it's basically every topic that we could examine is being looked at in the EIR. Everything from aesthetics to the energy and everything in between. So taking all of those, almost 700 pages in the EIR down to a paragraph, if I could, the draft EIR, and based on the technical studies that were conducted to provide the basis for the analysis, concludes that the project, the project's impacts can all be reduced to what's called a less-than-significant level, which means it may have impacts, but they're not significant. They don't rise to a threshold where the city becomes concerned that the impacts are negative, I guess, if you want to say it that way, with one exception, and that's vehicle miles traveled. That's something new that is part of sequel analysis for just a few years now. It looks at the number of vehicle miles that people who live in this subdivision will drive on an average day or in an average year. The state is trying to get cities to look at this in an effort to reduce overall vehicle traffic as a part of a strategy to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, improve energy efficiency, and so on. So that one measure of vehicle miles traveled is the one impact that is identified as significant and unavoidable. But everything else in the EIR can be mitigated to a level of less-than-significant. Some of those because there really are no impacts, others because there are mitigation measures which are in the environmental document. This says, well, we would have an impact if you impose this mitigation measure, that impact is reduced or eliminated. So a real quick timeline, the project goes back to 2010, when the first application for this subdivision was submitted to the city. Without going through the whole timeline here, suffice to say that in September of this year, September 23rd, we released the draft environmental impact report, which is the subject of tonight's meeting. That initially went out for a 45-day review period. We had a public comment meeting on November 2nd. One of the inputs that came back out of that meeting was the public saying, we'd really like to have more time to review the EIR. So that now has been extended to today, which gets us to a total of 67 days of public review. 45 are required by state law, so the city has gone over and above what's required in order to give the public more time to look at the document. Looking forward into the end of this year and into next year, we're going to spend the next probably month or so responding to the comments that came in. Those responses all get put into a response to comments or final environmental impact report documents. So we'll say we got these comments. Here's how we responded to them. The public has an opportunity to review those responses to the comments before it goes into hearings. We are looking in the first quarter of next year. We don't have a date yet to have actual public hearings on the project, which would be then the EIR and the tentative map. And then either later in 2022 or related time that the applicant chooses, again, those other three applications, the Affordable Housing Agreement, the Design Review, and the Use Permit for Multifamily Housing would come back. Those would all be subject to their own individual public hearings, but those are future items, not on our calendar at all at this point. And really briefly, again, just highlighting opportunities for public input. So we're now in the left-hand column, which is the 67-day, the expanded public review and comment period. When it comes to the Planning Commission for the tentative subdivision map, there will be public hearings there. There will be public hearings in the future at the city council for the Affordable Housing Agreement, and again, additional comments at the plant, or public hearings, rather, at the Planning Commission for the other two items. So that gets us to tonight's meeting, which is again, an opportunity for the public to provide comments on the draft EIR. The focus of comments really should be on the adequacy of that document. It is a technical document. We're looking for information on whether there was something perhaps analyzed incorrectly, information that we could have maybe updated information or corrected information. Those are the kinds of things we're looking for. Tonight's meeting is really not the time to comment on just the pros and cons of the project itself. That comes in public hearings next year. So that completes my presentation. I will note, real briefly, the EIR has been available in online since the beginning of the public review period. It's also been in printed form at the library and the City Hall. And here, commission members, it's staff's recommendation, which is that you receive this presentation, open the hearing, receive comments, close the hearing, and then if any commissioner wants to comment on the EIR tonight, would be an appropriate time to do that. I'll also mention that, well, Maya, I guess if they submit an email comment by the end of this meeting, I guess we'll still accept that.
That's correct.
Yeah, and there will be opportunities during the public hearings to comment on the environmental document, but the deadline to get comments in, so they're responded to and included in the final EIR really is tonight. And I will end my presentation here and bring it back to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. With that, I suppose we will start taking comments from the public. So at this time, we will open the public testimony portion of this hearing. Ms. Camaro, is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on the environmental document?
Let's see. Give me one second, Chair Ponce.
Mr. Chair, if I could, while we're waiting for the speaker to come on, one thing I forgot to mention, the recorded testimony from the first public comment meeting is being transcribed. That'll be part of the written record now. We're also recording tonight's meeting. That recording will also be transcribed, and the comments will be in the written record. So if you speak tonight, you can expect to see your words transcribed and in the final EIR.
Thank you very much, Mr. Norris. Ms. Camaro?
Chair Ponce, there are 13 members of the public. At the moment, there are no hands raised.
Well.
Oh, I see Tracy McBride just raised her hand. I will allow you to speak here in a second. Okay.
Please, Mr. McBride. You're on mute. There you go. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having this meeting and doing the extension, and thank you, Mr. Rosa, for answering questions that I had between this meeting and the last meeting. I just want to say that I found that the project's attorney's letter that was submitted was threatening. I thought it was kind of a threatening letter stating that the time period to extend the public comments shouldn't have been granted. And I just want to make the comment that we are still in a pandemic, and people are struggling with their own jobs and working with the pandemic. And this is a very, very complicated project, and to understand it, and I want to say I appreciate the extra time given. And I do hope you'll take some time to read my letter in the packet, but I do just want to super briefly highlight three items, that it is a false equivalence, and it's incorrect in this draft EIR to state that supplying the cost of water fixtures equates to the water usage for this project. As many people also state, the safety and evacuation and circulation is not adequately addressed in this EIR project. And I also feel that the multifamily, low-income housing is segregated and creating inequity issues for our town that just are not appropriate. So I just want to highlight those three topics. I also would really encourage the city to continue outreach to the other members of the town through social media, like Nextdoor, because I think a lot of people just don't really understand how to, you know, read the city documents, how to access them. They still don't know who to email. I see that question on Nextdoor. How do I email my comments in? Even though you think this might be really available to a lot of people, I think people are having a hard time understanding really how to read it, access it, and to comment. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Camaro, anyone else?
Yes, we have Marina Lavannino. You can go ahead and speak now.
Okay. Hello. Thank you. I agree that I greatly appreciate that the time was extended. I am one of those people who only found out about this in the last two weeks of the comment period, and the documentation is very detailed, which is great, but voluminous, and life is really crazy right now. And it's been difficult to find the time, even with the extra month, to go through it carefully, but I have tried to do so. Secondly, I wanted to say that having these Zoom meetings, while very convenient in some ways, makes it much more difficult to rally the troops to get together and attend a meeting. I think we'd have a greater response and more public comment if we were doing this in person. So I hope that you don't think that any low turnout this evening is representative of a disinterest in the project. I think it's just very challenging for a number of people to get involved in a Zoom call. My mother, for example, would not do this in a million years, but she might come with me to a public meeting. So hopefully, in the spring, we have an opportunity to communicate in person. That would be really wonderful. I did file, my sister and I filed a document yesterday, and I see that it's part of the agenda packet, so I know you received it. But I would like to read one portion of it that is what comes to me as the most important thing that's lacking from the draft EIR, and that relates to the recreational aspect of this project. And so there's much to review within the section of Public Service and Recreation. 2.45 persons per household for the purpose of calculating park and recreation facility demands is very different from the eight persons per four-bedroom home estimate used in the utility section. 12 elementary students among 87 residential units seems low. We would be interested in seeing what the numbers are at Hunt Street. So I'm curious as to whether or not some of the numerical things that look so easy to remedy, if they're really going to be accurate. I'm focusing here on recreation. In Section 3.12-16, it is stated that the city would have a ratio of 4.48 acres per 1,000 residents, which falls below the goal of five acres per 1,000 residents. So we would be short almost five acres of this goal. And interestingly, that's about 40 acres short of the nationally recommended standard mentioned. And don't we, in St. Helena, desire and deserve the higher standard? What this section woefully ignores is the recreation usage that will be taken away by this development. Yes, there are parks in St. Helena. Table 3.12-2 lists 11 parks. Eight of these are mini-parks. None of these parks provides a connection to the grandeur of St. Helena's position in the Napa Valley. There is a reason why so many St. Heleneans flock to the maintenance path, and it is not to look at the gravel beneath our feet. Walking along the berm provides a view of Mount St. Helena, both sides of the valley, beautiful vineyards, unique architecture with water towers and barns, a meadow, a habitat restoration area, and a river, all of which are home to numerous wildlife. And there is a tremendous view of the sky. From glorious sunrise to inspiring sunset, people come to this area to experience nature. It is convenient to the center of town and the library. It is free and currently available to all. It is a natural resource that provides space that we need that isn't available in any of our 11 parks. This resource should be better understood if we are trying to document St. Helena's recreational facilities. It will be drastically diminished if homes are built up to the edge of the maintenance road. So I cover a few other.
No, I would like to note that your four minutes are up. So if you would like to wrap your comment.
That's all that I needed to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Camaro, next, if we, assuming we have one?
I'll give, we have Matt Courtney, who would like to speak. You may go ahead and speak now.
Courtney, please.
Hello, my name is Anya Courtney. I'm 10 years old, and I go to St. Helena Elementary School. I looked over the EIR and saw there was nothing said about climate change. I don't think it makes sense to build a ton of houses where there is a river that can flood, especially now during climate change, when the floods are stronger and more unpredictable. I am a skier, and I notice every year there's less and less snowpack, which means less and less water. This EIR completely ignores this reality. I don't think this EIR does a good job of covering the impact of this project on air pollution. I don't like the idea of hundreds more cars driving on my street every day. I like living in our small town and breathing fresh air. Also, I use that fine grassy area to play and be outside. All in all, in my opinion, the EIR does a terrible job of taking into account all of these issues that are important to me and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Camaro?
Waiting here a couple of seconds, Chair. I do not see any more hands raised at the moment, Chair Ponce.
All right.
Chair Ponce, I did receive an email from somebody who's having trouble joining, and I advised that they call in. So we might want to just give it another minute or so to give them an opportunity to dial in. Thank you.
Good.
I do see a hand raised, Chair Ponce.
Okay.
Greg Reynolds, Vineyard Valley. You can begin to speak now, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, please. Appreciate an opportunity to speak again. Appreciate you folks extending this experience. I just wanted to comment that I am the managing partner for Vineyard Valley. I had commented first time around and a couple times online. The comments submitted yesterday by Vineyard Valley Mobile Home Park, I just wanted you guys to realize that they included an additional 55 people who put their name on our comments. We have that documented in writing, et cetera, so that all of them felt comfortable with what we had put together as our response. And I wanted to go on record to share that we have email support for all 55 names and a significant number of folks that would like to see this EIR evaluated in a different and more thoughtful way than what appears to be what's in front of us at this point. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds. Ms. Camaro?
There are no additional hands raised at the moment, Chair Ponce.
Let's pull it back to the commission for a few seconds. Is there any commissioner that has questions or comments on the environmental document? This would be the time for that. I do not see any. So Ms. Camaro, Director De Rosa, have we gotten that phone call yet?
I do not see anybody that has any of the attendees that are attending this meeting via phone. Oh, I do see a phone number. Not sure if they will be raising.
You, as in you go over the instructions again on how to raise your hand when you're on the phone?
Uh, yes. So during public comments, now you can press star nine in a hand will be raised, so I can see it. There you go. Okay. Please state your name for the written record. Thank you. I will ask you to unmute. Seems like you were muted as well. And you, I believe you can be here now.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Jenna Lavannino, and
Hi, my name is Jenna Lavainino and I live on Del Rio in Vineyard Valley. And one thing that I I walk out on the berm once, sometimes twice a day. I've been enjoying it since I was a kid. One thing I've noticed that I don't think anyone's ever talked about is that as far as the recreation aspect of the area, I see people on a weekly basis, I see fathers and and mothers teaching their children how to ride a bicycle. I see elderly people walking with a cane, getting exercise. I see people who are stroke victims walking with their their son. I saw that yesterday. As a way to spend time with each other as well as doing recreation, as well as physical therapy. The other thing I see, I see groups of people coming out and they bring their chairs and they they fly model airplanes. I see families coming out and they bring a cooler and they've got their sodas and their kids are riding bikes and they've got their little model airplanes and that type of thing. So I see this on a on a weekly basis. And the space out here allows for that type of activity. The smaller parks, not as much. There's trees and wires and telephones, you know, wires and such. And I just feel like there's a real family connection out there where you've got people spending time. They're not on their cell phones. They're not on their laptops. They're not playing video games. It's it's families out in nature, moving, talking, laughing, learning. And I just think that that's a very important aspect. And the space allows for that. And I think in a time where everyone is trapped on their phones and their and their, you know, TVs and such, to have a space where families can go and congregate and work together and be together and learn together is huge. So that's just one aspect I really haven't heard about while researching this. So that's really it. That's my two cents. We need the space. And if we don't have it, there's going to be a lot less activity of the such that I that I just talked about. So that's it, I guess. I hope that you will take this into consideration along with all the other. I mean, the water issues, sanitation issues, crime, fire, flood. I mean, those are all super, super important, but I think this is a really valuable thing to consider as well. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else?
No hands raised, Chair Pont.
No hands raised. All right, I will ask one more time if any commissioner has anything they care to say. I don't see anything. Well, unless there's anyone else out there who wishes to say something.
I do see a hand raised, Chair Pont, and it's a phone number. So if you can state your name for the written record, I will give you permission to speak now. I believe you are also muted. I will try to unmute you.
Can you hear me?
We can now. Thank you.
Oh, wonderful. Hi, my name is Angela Zivkovik and I wrote in a letter with some comments and I just wanted to also state them at this meeting. I have some concerns about the adequacy of the environmental impact report with regard to the fact that most of the data that are being used to make evaluations about whether there's enough water and whether it makes sense to consider the impacts, like the impact on potentially, you know, the traffic flow and other issues. None of these are actually taking into account the fact that there's a lot of changes that are taking place right now due to climate change. I think that we really have to, you know, be realistic about the fact that we practically ran out of water, even just without this development this year in this town. And that had it not been for that one big storm in October, we would be in a really dire situation right now, a month later with water for this entire community. And to put in even more housing, which would need to accommodate hundreds more people's water needs, I think is actually not very well considered. And it doesn't take into account the fact that we seem to be having a lot of drought issues and that that situation is going to be unpredictable going forward. The other issues that I raised had to do with climate change impact on the likelihood that there will be a catastrophic flood that will occur in the near future. Potentially, we do see bigger and bigger storms all the time because of climate change. And even the Federal Emergency Management Agency has revised the way that they consider what is a flood zone. The current environmental impact report does not take any of that into account and uses outdated flood scaling and assessment strategies. FEMA does not use the concept of the 100 year flood zone anymore as of October of this year. That is now an outdated concept. In recognition of climate change, they of course are now actually considering that, you know, these algorithms have to change from year to year because we can no longer predict climate. That's just the kind of phase we're in. It's an unfortunate and sobering fact. So the fact that this development is in a flood zone and we think that, oh, well, it's okay because there's a levy, levy fail and the likelihood that this one might fail under a catastrophic flood situation is very possible. And then finally, I also brought up concerns regarding evacuations and safety with regard to having hundreds more individuals living in the area where we already have the highest density in in town. And we also have some of the most vulnerable populations in town, including low income housing that's already right there adjacent to this proposed development, as well as elderly housing and other high density housing areas that all are going to be needing to use the same emergency evacuation routes that are going to be highly impacted by having a higher number of people living here. And because there's more and more fires every year in emergency evacuations are are a growing reality for us. This is something that is is not being accounted for correctly in the environmental impact report. So I encourage you to please read the full statement that I sent in. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Do we have any further comments?
No further hands raised, Chair.
I'm a little reluctant to halt the meeting after 40 minutes, but unless there's somebody else who wishes to come forward, I will do that. All right. I will close the public hearing. And that finishes this item and moves us on to item six, which is new business. Let's see any. Scheduled matters, none. Number eight, department reports. Director De Rosa, do we have anything for this evening?
Um, yes, just want to let you know that we will be, our next meeting will be December 9th instead of the 7th. So I think you all have your Zoom information for that, but just a friendly reminder. And we'll see you at that meeting. Thank you.
Agenda forecasts, as always, are available on the city website. And this is also the time, if any member of the commission wishes to see something added to a future agenda. Is there any member of the commission that has something? I don't see any hands waving around for that. So that brings us to item 10, which is adjourned. And we are adjourned. Thank you very much.